Good evening. June 5, 2018, approximately six o'clock. Try to get started all time, we've got a lot of stuff. The board official called me, I wanted to ask that Commissioner Cowan give us the indication, follow our pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Seaman. Our Father in heaven, Lord of all, thank you, big God, for your blessings, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for you, County Lord, and the people that live here. All we just ask you to give us wisdom and guidance, Lord, as we make decisions in our best interest for everyone in the county. But thank you for all things, good last night.
Amen.
I plead with this to the flag of the United States of America and to the regard of our citizens, our nation under God, and the vision of the liberty and justice of our world.
Then we have an old work session, work session on the pledge. I'll turn it over to Mr. Perk.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Can he hear me? Thank you. When last, I believe it was about three weeks ago when we last met to go over the budget. Since that time, as you know, we have met with all the commissioners to talk further about concerns and interests in the budget. And out of those meetings with the budget, we developed several scenarios based on starting with no milled rate increase up to a 1 mil increase. And you have before you worksheet that, excuse me, Nicole will be going over with you shortly. And I wanted to bring your attention to a few things. As you know, we've had some expenses that have occurred over the last year and couldn't do anything about, notably, and these were increases in cost and increase in our budget. The ABM payment has increased significantly, $515,000 is what we will be adding to the expense line there. We are transferring money to the solid waste fund. This is the tax portion of the revenue bond, that's $593,000. And then the fire positions, fire and sheriff positions that were added back in December of last year, at $1,002,000 for the fire positions and $497,000 for the sheriff positions. The other things, the next thing that I wanted to mention was that we do have some capital and small equipment requests that are critical, and you'll see those as we will talk about those as we go through this worksheet. But also, so what we've done too, and you'll also see on there that we have reflected or given or reflected your concerns and some of the options that we discussed individually with you all, including not funding additional positions, partially funding positions, not fully funding the market study and the salary increases and various options there, as well as only funding some of the new positions. And then also, there was also a discussion that some of the commissioners wanted to take a look at the reducing the appropriations, certain appropriations by a certain amount. You can see those on this worksheet as well. And so what we've done is to try to provide several scenarios and almost cafeteria approach, if you will, so that you would be able to, hopefully, we'll be able to come to a consensus on what direction we need to go with this so that then we can move on to the hearings, portions of our budget process. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Nicole Cross, our financial director, financial department director, and have her go through the slides that she's put together, as well as walk you through this worksheet. We do have the ability to add, subtract, and so forth on the slide so we can do an update, give you an update as to whatever scenario that you decide for what impact that would become of the budget. With that, I'll turn this over to her.
Thanks, sir. First, I wanted to start off with a few, a short discussion about what we all have on regarding the budget. After the budget was presented last time, I had several calls from my office regarding the way the information was, or doing it correctly. So I wanted to briefly just go over the requirements regarding the budget. The budget is presented to the board. A copy of the proposed budget is posted on the county's website, available to view at the county clerk's office, and a copy is provided to the newspaper upon request. These are all requirements by the state. A notice advising the public of the availability of the budget is published in the newspaper. At that time, we also advertised the public hearing. The public hearing must be held one week prior to budget adoption, and the ad must occur in the newspaper one week prior to that public hearing. Regarding the budget, there is only requirement that one public hearing be held. More are allowed, but only one is required when it comes to the budget. So you hold your public hearing at least one week prior to adoption. The budget can change before adoption. The advertised budget is not the final version, and the version as of the hearing is often not the final version, not part of that discussion during the hearing. And then advertising budget adoption after the public hearing, that notice must stay in one week for the budget meeting. And then the budget is adopted formally by the board for resolution at that moment. Is that all right? Okay, so this is the advertisement that actually appeared in the newspaper coming to news on May 11th, and it is the information required by the state to be held. And this information was also put on our website the next day. There was some problems with viewing of that document. There were some slides that weren't, that had some trouble viewing. So we did put a new copy out there that's a little easier to view. The scanned copy was just a little hard. But it is available on the website. It is available in the county clerk's office, and at any time, you can call off, and send you can come by, we have a copy as well. So there's always one available. Every member of the board received a copy, so they had a copy of the proposed budget as well. The next is a proposed advertisement. Since we are changing and we did not hold our public hearing this evening, we will have to re-advertise. And this is a proposed advertisement on when we want to do that, and we can discuss this near the end of the meeting, in order, you know, the state requires that we have a budget adopted before our new fiscal year begins. So we're looking at by the end of this month, obviously. So in order to do that, we would need to be able to make some decisions tonight in order to get those ads placed in the newspaper. Those ads require a seven-day notice, and because our publications are only printed once weekly, we only have that opportunity on Sundays. So this is just a suggestion. The next is regarding the tax digest and milled rate. In the past, the budget and the milled rate have been adopted together, and you can do that, but because of the timeline regarding the tax digest, and it's not required to be made until July 2nd, we would need to adopt a budget before our tax digest is complete. So on July 2nd, the tax digest and rollback forms will be received. The next few scenarios are the dates in which we would be required to have public hearings and to formally adopt the milled rate at the end of the month. There are requirements, and this is just a little brief summary of how you go through that process regarding the milled rate. So were there any questions about that? I just wanted to make sure everyone understood the process. Okay, the next slide is a little hard to read, so, but it's mainly for your purposes, and you'll have an electronic version. But there's some discussion about the increase in our budget over the last few years. So we write, probably there's an analysis of our budget from 2016 to what is proposed in 2019, and some discussion on the right about the significant increases. And when we look at the budget from 16 to 19, the total increase at the bottom is 11.8 million. So the question is, where have our significant increases been? And if we go through the main, the first section up there is general government. And if we look in there, in 2018, we added for the first time contingency. So we had a contingency for cash reserve, a contingency for fund balance, and a contingency for fiscal year changes. So that added 1.1 million from, in 2018. Also moved all insurances to a risk management department. So that took off our insurances out of individual departments and put it into one. So that's where the general overall increase occurred in general government. When you look down through the other departments, there's not any significant increases until you get to public safety. And most significant increases that have occurred in public safety were in salaries and benefits, and we'll talk about that on the next slide. And then the overall received debt service has increased almost a million, and that is in regards to the ABM payment. So in 2019, our ABM payment is 946,000. There is guaranteed energy savings in the contract associated with that, 425,000. So our overall increase from 18 to 19 is only 500,000, but the total is 900,000. On the next page is the analysis of the salaries and benefits by department. Overall, our last increase was in public safety. But if you look, the significant increase from 17 to 18, we had 22 new positions in fire and nine new positions in sheriff, and those occurred in December of this past year. Last year, in our budget adoption, we also upgraded market adjustment to sworn officers and firefighters. That was almost 1.2 million, and 3% rise, I'm sorry, it was a 5% rise for other employees. There was 3% in July, 2% in January, and that totaled 509,000. And then if you look in 2019, these were the proposed increases that we presented to you at the last meeting. These were all the new positions. And if you look down sheriff, he had requested 12 positions. We did net out with seven vacancies that we determined was a vacancy percentage. So if you look, his net increase was 48,000. When we looked at fire, or jail, I'm sorry, he requested seven new positions, but we took out 10 for a vacancy percentage, and that actually decreased his salary budget request for that year. Fire was 20 positions, and we all set it with a five vacancies, which included 317,000 dollar increase. The other one, the largest piece of this increase was the market adjustments that we proposed. The market adjustments we proposed were 100% of market and a 5% of minimum for all employees. That included public safety as well. And the next one is some notable employee-related changes that have happened. And this was a request from one of the commissioners to kind of discuss what has happened over the years with employees, and why the focus this year has been on the market adjustments and raises for employees. So, you know, the great recession started in about 2009, I would say, and during that year is where it really started to begin. The layoffs began in 2009, continued in 2010. 2010 through 2012, all employees were perload for 15 holidays. So for 15 days, they were unpaid. There were no raises during that time period. 2013, the number of holidays was changed to 11, with one was paid and 10 remained unpaid. There were no raises. In 2014, there were still 11 holidays, however, six were paid and five remained unpaid. There were again no raises. In 2015, there were 11 and a half holidays added back, and they were all paid. In January of 2015, a certain group of employees received raises depending on hire dates. So 2% was given if you were hired before December of 2008, and 1% if you were hired between 2009 and 2011. In April of 2015, it was approved that all sheriff, jail, and SRO employees received a dollar an hour increase. Fire received an increase as well, but it was based on an individual submission by the fire chief at the time. 2016, 11 and a half holidays, and they were all paid, and there was a 2% raise given in January of 2016 for all employees. In 2017, there are 13 holidays, all of which were paid, but there were no raises. And then in 2018, we had 13 holidays, all of which were paid. And then last year's budget is when we began the market adjustment for sworn officers and firefighters. They received half of their adjustment in July and then half in January. And then all other employees received 5%, and they received 3% of that in July and 2% in January. And the last page are the various scenarios. So this is where I assume probably is then most of our discussion. The first column is the column that we presented to you at the last board meeting. It was the proposed budget. Some of the numbers slightly changed among departments. The market, the market analysis we had was a slightly preliminary number, so we had to make some adjustments within there. But the first column is the proposed budget that we presented to you at the last meeting. After that, we have several scenarios going from a .75 milled increase to zero. Each of those scenarios are based on different discussions I had with each of you and each of your ideas for how you wanted the budget to look. There are market adjustments, there are varying variations of that, new positions. New positions, we may have to amend the budget if there is a milled increase, and they fall in your 1 mil and the .75 mil increase. And then at the bottom are appropriations. There was discussion on other couple commissioners that they would like to discuss, considering our cut of appropriations in order to provide employee raises. So that scenario is in there for your consideration as well. Are there any questions or?
Thank you, sir. First of all, being late, I have family. Sometimes those stuff just comes up, and we have to say that, we have to address. But anyway, to make a long story short, you were saying that there's a possibility that Mr. Last Year, we have to cut appropriations in order to give our employees additional benefits, some additional money. So how much more, if you said for example, you could allow appropriation in terms of what was not owed?
The appropriation reductions were considered only, pardon me, if you're not going to raise the milled rate in order to cover employer, employee raises. If you look at the, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth column, you'll see where, and then look over at the appropriations, you'll see where radiation would be reduced by 250,000. And then there were a list of those appropriations that would be reduced by half, DFACS, library, mental health, physical health, CASA, HSTAR, community partnership, and those would have been reduced by 50%. And the CID would not have been funded at all. The remaining appropriations would have been funded at their current rate, which would, the same rate that they received this past year.
So if you could all that, would that be what we need to be at as far as getting our employees are raised?
Yes, if I would fund, if we did all of those things, we would have, and we funded 100% of the market adjustment and then 5% for, with a minimum of 5% for employees. That's what it would take in order to do that. We'd also have to reduce the contingency by 169,000 dollars, but we would not be able to hire any additional personnel. The other scenario would be to fund the salary increases at 95% of the market rate, and with a minimum of 3%, I'm sorry, almost 3% as well, 100% of market for sworn firefighters, but 3% increase for the rest of the employees. And then we would not be able to fund any of the new employees. And then the other scenario would be 95% of the market rate and then 3% for the remainder of the employees. But we, again, in either scenario, we would not be able to fund any of the positions.
Absolutely, and then you would, I think in terms of, of the programs and stuff that most people in the community enjoy, they would probably have to be cut to the way of, and you know, I think there would be a big drop, and then we would get less law enforcement, first responders, 5, 5, 7, and even trying to keep them at the same level as I think we have enjoyed over the years of our first responders and our county courts. And so, you know, I was just, I was just thinking out loud, I was saying, well, we do all these cuts and cuts, and we still wouldn't be where we need to be at as far as bringing our courts, our first response, our, back to the level we need to be at, at least, I'm hoping that we're able to compete with the, at the very least, to see the cuts and as far as hiring our veterans and our firefighters.
Thank you. Thank you out loud. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any more questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Shulz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When the market study was done, was there a comparison of benefit in the market study or was it just salary? Was there a comparison of retirement, health insurance, holiday, vacation?
The only thing that we considered was the salary. We did not look at total compensation packages. We did get some anecdotal information, if you will, but the focus of this was on the job classifications, job descriptions, and then the salaries for those jobs.
So have we looked at what the cost of those benefits are per employee?
We've not done one of that as a part of this, I don't know.
Is it some, I mean, if we're going to give a market adjustment on salary, there is a cost for those benefits, and it's important for us to understand what that cost is.
And we can put that together for you in terms of what the county, I guess, what you're looking at is county contributions to health benefits and any other benefits that we have.
I would like that information.
Sure. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nicole, the contributions to the solid waste fund, is this the first time that someone in solid waste authorities has created a fund transferred to the solid waste? Or is that something we've done?
No, there's been a transfer to the solid waste fund.
Is it substantially higher now, relative to the debts?
No, it's not substantially higher. It was, it used to be almost a million dollars.
That's because it's actually cut down?
It's just substantially higher from the prior year. Yes. Last year, we did, I think it was a little over 100,000 that had been transferred, but in order for them to fund their operations next year, they were in assistance with that taxable piece that they're having involved.
So historically, I guess, we have always funded the solid waste operations out of the county general fund. We created solid waste authority, we incurred some additional debt, and that's probably the amount that we sent out there.
Correct, yes.
Commissioner Shulz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In previous years, that contribution was upwards, back in 2015, of 2 million dollars, and it's come down, but then when we incurred the debt, you know, there was that, that piece of the debt. I do, I just need to understand these, these different columns. Okay, so if we go all the way to the far right, that's assuming we stay where we are in terms of salaries and wages, no new positions?
Yes, the first column all the way to the right would be where we are now. So we would be able to fund the things that we, that have happened already regarding the ABM payment, those kinds of things, yes.
And we're, and we're still funding the 22 fire positions and the nine sheriff positions, but we're funding them at current rate?
No, in the first column, with no milled increase, we would not be able to fund any new positions.
But no, I'm, okay, so...
Oh, those are the ones that ended in December, yes, yes.
The ones that were added in December?
Yes, yes, those are included, yes.
It's just we're funding them at today's market rate?
Correct.
All right, so then we go over to the next column, and that's assuming that we give a 3% rate, wage increase, is that correct?
The second column would be 95% of market for sworn, 3% for all other employees.
Okay, 95%? Okay. But we still have to make the cuts to appropriations to make that balance?
Correct. The only way, that was a discussion I think we had, in order to fund some employee raises, what would need to happen, and that was when the discussion of cutting some appropriations. So there's two scenarios there. The first one would be the 95% of market and 3%.
So we're still in that?
The next column is 100% of market for sworn and firefighters, and 3% for all others. And what would happen there is we'd have to cut our contingency fund in order to fund that increase.
Okay, but from the right, we're not doing the 9, if we're coming from the right, 13.4, we can't do the 95% of market? Correct.
The three further to the right columns are milled rate where they are, 13.441. So in order to fund either of the market options for employees, which would not be, only for sworn, yeah, it would not be for other, it would just be 3%, would require cuts to appropriations, yes.
I understand.
Yes, okay.
Any more questions, Commissioner? Mr. Chairman, if we could, we were hoping to get somehow a consensus on this. Obviously, there's some more information that's needed. If...
If the members, if the commissioners can tell us what else, if anything, that they're looking for, and then we'll need to schedule another work session to provide the additional information, or go over the, the information. I understand what Commissioner Schultz is asking for, the health benefit, what that cost is to each employee, and we can, we can provide those numbers for you.
Well, not only the health benefit, but the contribution for 401K as well, if there is a contribution?
Yeah, the benefits relating to that.
Anything that's benefited. I, I think, I'm sorry, I think, you know, when you take an employee and you see what the cost of healthcare, the county contribution for their healthcare, their 401K contribution, even vacation and holiday time, there's a cost to that, and I'd like to see what that cost is.
Sure, we'd be glad to put that together.
Usually, it's upwards between twelve to twenty-five thousand dollars per employee, so I'd like to see what that is.
Okay, sure, we'd be glad to. Commissioner, I meant to make, Commissioner Cowan?
We got a little bit more, uh, the active employee vacant positions sheet you gave. You've got vacant positions and requested positions placed over together, is that what I'm reading this?
Those, maybe talking about this sheet that's the green?
Yes.
Yeah, that is current census, if you will, that's the current of, that's not the new request, that does not include the, any requested positions for FY nineteen.
Okay, so no new positions, these are all vacancies?
Those are all vacant as of today.
So now, is there anything in the budget where we've added for a new position in the budget? Because we got a lot of vacancies.
I'm sorry, was a question, Commissioner?
In the budget, is there, are there any vacancies allocated, but, money allocated for a position to be approved?
Depends on which of the scenarios under, pardon me, with the, it isn't until we get to point seven five mil increase, that we would be able to add new positions.
All right, so any of the positions that are already out there, we're basically going to wait until those positions are filled before we approve any additions?
Yeah, if that's what the board, if that's your prompt, in your direction, that's what we would do. But we would still need to budget for those positions, so to be able to pay in order with them.
So let me see, I gotta do that. Get to the, all the positions, you know, the six hundred eighty-five vacancies, six hundred eighty-five total positions, we need to be at least to where the mileage rate?
Point seven five. To add those additional positions that have been requested, we need point seven five.
Okay, just, just to not adding additional positions, where do we need to do?
We can either be at current rate, which is thirteen point four four one, we can either do ninety-five percent for sworn and firefighters, and three percent for the rest of the employees, or we would do a hundred percent for sworn and firefighters, and just three percent for the other employees. Either one of those scenarios at the, the current military would allow us to give, I'm sorry, would allow us to do those pay licenses for everybody. We wouldn't be able to get higher than anybody new, until we got to that point seven five. I hope I didn't confuse you on that.
Now, I'm, I'm, I just, I just want to see if we, if we stay where we are, and just commit to fill the vacant positions that we have, how much money do we need to do that? So I think we answered that question.
Can you just repeat the answer to that question?
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm, I think I got lost in the reading.
Okay.
So, so simplifying it, exactly what you said?
Sure. In order for us to fill all the current vacancies, and to provide a salary increase for the, pardon, for our employees, we can stay at the current rate, thirteen point four four one, and if we reduce the appropriations by the amount that you see there, by two fifty for the recreation, and a total of seven eighty-one for the rest, we reduce that, then, pardon me, we can provide ninety-five percent of the market for the sworn officers and the firefighters, and three percent for the rest of the employees. That would allow us not to have to reduce our contingency. If we went with a hundred percent of market for sworn, and three percent for the remainder of the employees, then we would still need to do the reduction in the appropriations. And, pardon, that would also reduce the contingency balance by a hundred sixty-nine thousand. Got Commissioner Hemmerson first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, you know, it's, it's how, how many years it's been, where we always say, well, let's cut the recreation, it's down towards the end list, and yet, they're leaving us, going on to, you know, going to the county, going to the city of Cuthbert, for better pay, going to R. D. L. for better pay, going to Atlanta for better pay, and while at the same time, crying, is moving right to here in New County. You know, we're about the only county that I know of, when I, you know, I've kind of been out talking around, that don't have a, a gang task force. In case, in case you don't know, in case some people may ask, oh, we have gangs there, and they're actively thriving, and even the city of Cuthbert took them to the best of my knowledge, I haven't even put in the county, I get to Cuthbert, they don't even have gang task forces, for folks, and they're here, and we're not giving a hell of them. But, you know, I, I, I'm pretty sure someone said, well, it don't matter, you know, it don't affect me, until somebody do something to you, it affect you then. I bet you neither, I said, well, you know, maybe that old, that old man something, maybe he may have known or something. If we're gonna be behind the curve, or we're gonna be in front of the curve. And they're in our school, they live in, on our streets, and they walk in on us, on us. And I didn't get asked, how often, how the, the debt is, especially the ones who work in jail. And then I said, well, how can you tell them, they're a possible gang? He said, tattoos. He said, so many of the folks with tattoos in the jailhouse, he says, why change? You know, we, we keep on, I, I remember, Commissioner Sam said one time, keep on, keep in that road, but we keep it on that road. You know, so, but, you know, either we, you're trying to get things, move in a direction and do now, or keep on waiting, so whether we, you know, we don't do nothing, until the effect is moving, and we would have wished, and we would have thought, maybe, uh, Christian, the gang issue, and also our employees paid. It's, it's not good to be one of the lowest paid employees, doing the same service as in the, with county seat pay more. It's not good when you got R. D. L. who's next to us, and city of Cuthbert who is our county seat paying more than our debt, because I think it's, it's, it's quite illegal. You know, that's, you know, some people, you have to, I almost said, well, hey, this is your home, man, you can stay here, and you can take your symptoms. And I know some people say, well, let's, let's just, let's stop, pay the less we can. Why don't you go to jailhouse, take the key, hold up the alarm off? Hey, we could go in the zero, and, well, work on it, there'd be so many families in our county. And what they have to do, I'm gonna speak right, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna look, preacher, I call it, a little deacon, is if we're gonna do something, we're gonna wish we did something, and then sometimes it's not right. And I'm just from close, this is, I remember when they came in front of the grocery, and it wasn't, and she was talking about a father, a neighbor uncle, and she said, she said, she had tears in her eyes, and I tell you, Ms. Jackson and I, we cried with her, because she said, if the ambulance service would have been three minutes, two minutes earlier, be able to save the loved ones alive, you know, and so that's why we threw up our nose, you know, moved some vehicles in, you know, in the gas station and stuff, so we kept people over the faster. And so, you know, I don't, I would like, it's not my wife, somebody comes and says, well, maybe we'll have those ten, or maybe we'll hit this or hit that. I like to be proactive, rather reactive. And so, I just thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sam, and Commissioner Schultz, and Commissioner Cowan.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question to Lloyd or Nicole. What was that percentage or ratio for employee vacancy for fire and sheriff? Meaning, that's what I took from what you said, at any given time?
The vacancy percentage?
That would be the vacancy.
Right, so for firefighters, their vacancies are normally five firefighters at any given time. For sheriff, it was seven deputy sheriffs, and for jail, it was ten detention officers.
Thank you, Commissioner Howard Schultz.
Mr. Chairman, so Lloyd or Nicole, and the appropriations cuts that are proposed, are any of these services that are mandated, or are they all discretionary?
There would need to be some further review of some of these, these were the appropriations that were mentioned to us, that were from the commissioners who discussed this issue, that desire to be cut on those. There are some questions on some of them, and it would need a legal review.
I think that, before we make that determination, we have to have that information as to whether there, if all of this money is discretionary versus if there are any mandates?
It's discretionary. We, we consider the fact that it's discretionary. However, I would suggest that a legal review go into each one. You know, we don't have agreements with a lot of these appropriations, so where they begin, and all those kinds of things, that would take some time. But, for the most part, yes, they are discretionary. It is up to the county delegation to decide how much funding they would provide to these, above and beyond, most of the, you know, some of the larger ones, what the state provides. It's up to the local delegation to decide.
Thank you, Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I'm just trying to get some money, clear money here. If we fill all the vacancies that we have, obviously, just no additional positions, will we still be able to offer employees any raise at all proposed?
Only if you cut in a dollar area.
Okay, so, filling all the vacancies with a raise would still require some cuts to appropriations, is that right?
You need to cut appropriations or increase to the mileage, yes.
Or increase to the mileage?
Correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Howard Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just so I'm clear, also, to, to fill currently budgeted positions, not, not wanted positions, currently budgeted positions, to fill those, would not require, is that, is that what you were asking, Mr. Cowan?
Yes, current budget positions are in the current budget, so there's no mileage necessary to fund those. Those are in the budget. The, the new positions that were added last December can be funded through, what we have projected, our tax digest will increase naturally, without any sort of mileage increase.
Okay, just so I'm clear, so, the, the property value increases will fund the current positions that were needed as of December?
Correct.
And January?
Yes.
Okay. One other comment, Mr. Chairman, thank you, one other comment, Mr. Chairman, is, is, is clear through the history that Nicole has put together here, that the employees have borne the brunt of the economic downturn, and I don't know what that did in terms of services for our community, but my, my desire is that we, we use the natural increase through the top, property tax increase, to help make our employees whole or more whole. And I will not support a mileage increase. We cannot get into, now, I want to take our county employees, all our county employees, and like I said, make them as whole or more whole, but as we move forward, we cannot get into a salary race or war with other, with our surrounding communities. We can provide what we can provide, and if that's not good enough, then we'll have to deal with that fallout. But I don't think that we can afford to get into a, you know, a salary, salary inflation with other, with other communities. I just don't think it's, it'd be helpful or productive for any community. So, I will, I will, I will support the, the, the increase asset core by the market, in terms of our profit base increases, but I, I just cannot support a mileage increase. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just gonna make a few comments. You know, I look at the, the slide that Nicole provided, our employees, first of all, our employees are our greatest asset. That's the bulk of our budget, is dedicated to employees. For seven years, they got no raise, and when they did get a raise, it was two percent, which really doesn't amount to much. The one thing that concerns me on the public safety side is recruitment and our starting rate. I, I agree partially with District One Commissioner, we can't get into a, a competitive analysis with, with other counties on what we pay, but at the same time, we, we just went through seven to nine years with no pay increase, and, you know, I'm, I'm ashamed to say what our starting salary is for a fireman. I am very ashamed to say what that is. But we ask all of these young men and women to go through training, suit up, and come save our lives. I, I challenge anybody, ain't putting work with Ms. Jackson. Call Ms. Jackson, ask what the starting salary, I'm not gonna say it, because I'm ashamed to say what it is. They can go to another county and make more money, that's true. We'll never catch those other counties. They started before us, it's like if we both had the same car, and I took off a year before you, you'd never catch me. We'll never catch them, but if we don't do anything, we're gonna get further and further behind, to where those good employees that stuck with us for the last nine years, the ones that are still here, they're gonna start to leave us. And, you know, during the bad economy, a lot of people came to government to work, because a lot of corporate and private was not hiring. But now that it's completely flipped, and corporate and private is, is hiring at record rates, and, and so what scares me is, as they go off to those other places, who are we left to hire? And what really scares me, if, if we're hiring whatever is left over, those are gonna be the services that we're gonna be providing to our citizens. And in good countries, I can't sit up here and, and not try to give the best that we can when it comes to our public safety, because they'll be the ones that come to save one of us or somebody in our family. And like I said, our starting salary for firemen, I don't know how those guys could achieve... Chief, my hat goes off to all of you guys. I, I, I just don't know how they survive with, with what our starting salary is. It really scares me. It really scares me for the future of this community, our recruitment. If we don't start to do something, we're already behind the eight ball, it's only gonna get worse. And like I said, I'm afraid we're just gonna be hiring whoever can't get a job anywhere else. And, and that's gonna bring other problems. If they can't get a job anywhere else and they have to come to new county, maybe something was in their way? I don't know, maybe we had to hire them. And that's gonna, that's gonna start other problems that we don't wanna have in our community. So with, with the budget, regardless of where it goes, we gotta give that market increase, uh, to those employees. So if that's raising the mileage rate, not raising the mileage rate, that's one I'm at. If you guys wanna know where I'm at, is, as District Two, we gotta give our employees that market raise. It won't get them back to where they need to be. They won't even be competitive out there with, with surrounding counties. But we're moving in the right direction, we're not getting further and further behind that eight ball. We all participated in a strategic plan, or strategic, uh, preliminary strategic plan, where we ask citizens, what was their main priorities? I can't speak for the other four districts, I can only speak for my district. Sheriff, more deputies on the road was number one. Fire was number two. I think number three was code enforcement. You know, that's another department. We ask a lot of, um, I get calls, mostly calls from outside of my district. I get a lot of calls from outside of my district, can you help me with this situation with this house, with this, with trash? And we're asking our officers to, to put on gloves and dig through trash, find somebody, and we're asking a lot of them. And we only got one, maybe two guys at that best, doing that. Um, so we need more people, uh, in that department. That's been, um, a request from citizens. And lastly was roads, um, you know, cutting the grass. More people cutting the grass more frequently, uh, especially with the, the rain we got this year, the rain we got last year, uh, grass grew faster. And our road crew just couldn't keep up with it, uh, like we did in the past. So those are requests from our citizens through that strategic plan. I'm gonna try to adhere to what they want. I'm allowed, I don't, I don't wanna see a tax increase, but I'm only presenting what has been asked and what I think is right for us to do for our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Shil.
So what I hear from our constituents is that they want public safety funded. They want the vacancies that we have currently funded. And, and I would say that if we had trouble filling those vacancies, then we have to look at what the market is telling us we need to do to get those vacancies filled. I don't think we need to look at additional employees until we have the vacancies filled. That means that we can take a three-year approach on those additional employees, but let's get the current vacancies filled at a, at a rate, a salary rate, a market rate, that will fill those vacancies. With that said, the only other area that my, that I hear consistently is for at least one additional code enforcement officer. Finally, what my district is also telling me is, they've also had to pay, they're, they're expected to pay an eight percent increase because of property, property values. So they don't want the increase, they don't want an increase. So cut somewhere else to look, to achieve the goal of, of hiring those public safety individuals at a market rate. Filling the vacancies so we can get definitely the bank out on the road and making sure that we have at least one more code enforcement officer. And that's what my district tells me, and I represent them.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson. Thank you, Mr. Trump. You know, I, I worked with, with Nicole, at least, you know, once I got elected, I represented all of the county. Uh, not just, just for all of the county as a whole, though, because we make decisions that affect every citizen and you have, even the ones who are in, in this, in the city, uh, um, to a certain extent. But I tell you what I heard, and I follow all the deputies or whatever, that's what most people say I be at. People were worried about their safety. And when most of you learned how many deputies were actually thrown at night, you said, we have, we need people who need to know where they need to be at. And I think most, you know, and I don't have to advertise, you tell the bad guys what's going on at nighttime. I think this whole time is still good at nighttime, they're hiding in the shadows, or when it rains, you know, to do something, be alert to some people. Uh, so we gotta look at our share categories. You guys have something to do, you know, with the protocol costs? But also they're looking at, why are all their trashes in the woods? Because we suck at sales, that's why. They can't get in. If they can get in, they probably come and we suck too, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna poop in the woods. It used to be, and I use for an example, that's what I know I see every day. Uh, we had to, um, obviously bring out some, uh, people working in the county, they put their trash around us, my experience in medicine, and they put it all up. And one thing is, you know, I got there, the old sofas, the old mattresses. I can take pictures and probably intimidate you with a whole lot of pictures of people throwing mattresses, tires, and stuff in the woods. They in the woods, they, they throwing this stuff in the woods. And Lord has to get somebody, they gonna, for, 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 you know, where it's still tires, and old mattresses, and old sofas, oh yeah, they gonna pick them up. And I'm thinking, you may not even be buzzing for that. But my, yeah, look what you're doing. You can do one thing, it's the other thing. If you go, they don't care, they don't care, they don't own the property, it's just some of the woods. But somebody's doing it. So we, we have to understand what we're doing for another thing. One thing people ask me is more about recreation, they wanna be able to not go out there, and members go out there and have a swing and a slice and take their children. You know, a decent slide, a decent swing, and so they can take their kids and stuff. And that's not too much to ask of how we're gonna do fishing. But, you know, so, you know, we need to provide that for our community to live with. Our county, the little county, I mean, other, uh, Lord, the road department. I mean, we have really just not, hey, we made it to the city, twenty years, we sell it. And, and several years, and, you know, and they still stay with us. And somebody, well, well, I understand, well, I can tell you, I got the answer, because we love this county. But it's still, those are still in battle for it, it's still awesome. You know, so we should do everything that we can for once, by this commission, to bring our employees, and make sure we have birth of race for our, for our community and our childrens. And I don't think nobody will be mad when, you know, if once we get where it need to be at, and I don't know what that number is, at this point, we'll take the fourth floor, take the guys, but it's not here. But once they do what's forced there, you know, maybe we can fix this so that we don't have to look like every year, maybe look at a, a mil, a mileage increase because we have it all figured out. But I can tell you one thing, I bet you if we get a raise here before you, I bet you we get that automatically, five percent. If I get a raise, I get five percent, if you realize, I'll get five percent. So these are the commissions. And possibly, I don't know about chair, I don't know about commission. And so, you know, that's our plan, based on the share, on, on, on the share pay. Let's do our employees the same way. Come on, people, you know, do what's right. But I can tell you one thing, when trouble come to your house, and somebody maybe jump on one of your little women, and you call them out, you wanna, you wanna patrol the car, get the town member in order to see you, to hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, sir, Commissioner Cowan. Yeah, I appreciate seven o'clock, so.
Okay, just to be brief, everybody's made some real good points. Um, I think the, the key thing that I learned as a HR director is that when you're providing services for government, uh, it's gotta have a person, because the police cars might not gonna stop the fight, the firefighters might not gonna put out the fire, you better have people riding, and you gotta make sure that they are adequately compensated. So, uh, I think we've got to make that, um, decision to move forward with our employees as it applies to some market adjustments. Uh, I am, wanna make sure, and I talked to the county manager and Nicole, make sure that with proper pay structures in place so that we're not just throwing money into, to the department or whatever. Uh, that we actually got this structure in place, uh, based on what, uh, our group has put together for us. And, um, I think we might have to make these adjustments tonight, we're, we're continuing to believe in employees and can provide services without them. So, uh, I think everybody's made some good points. I appreciate everybody taking a good look at this.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one thing, Mr. Jordan, I appreciate this. I appreciate you coming out here tonight to explain to everybody, uh, how this, this session's office works and how the property estimates are made. I appreciate you coming out, maybe we can get you back sometime, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, if there's not anything else, I'll seek a motion to adjutant.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think we probably need another work session on this so that we can come to a consensus, and then we can advertise for a hearing. Um, um, so, uh, I, we, next, I'd like to recommend maybe that we try to meet perhaps next Tuesday at, uh, six, if that'll work for everybody.
Tuesday, Tuesday, at six o'clock?
Tuesday, the twelfth, June twelve at six o'clock here in this, in this, in the chambers here.
Thank you. We'll be, we'll be listening here from, uh, Mr. Joy at, uh, at the scheduled board meeting tonight, so.
Right, that's correct, we're gonna have him come up to the county manager and report.
All right. So I'll seek a motion to adjutant. The motion by Commissioner Sam, second by Commissioner Henderson, all in favor. Let me go take five.